It is nine AM. If you'll please rise for invocation of Black Slid, we'll tell the meeting to order.
Dear my father, thank you for this day and thank you for bringing us all together and thank you for the comfort of their position. And we'll get a fix and send a message with this as it goes in the meeting and you know, she's not afraid.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have minutes of July fourteenth.
Make the motion to approve this red.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve at the minutes of July fourteenth. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, please. Item number four miscellaneous items from the audience. If you'd come up here and state your name for the record.
My name is Kathy Mackens and I'm a Payne County resident and late last night I got an email from another Payne County resident who had gotten an email from another Payne County resident. Now, it's the item five D, discussion of possible action piece industrial. And. Have a good day. Basically, we don't know a lot about lots about other than perhaps it's a mixed development out east of town on Highway fifty-one somewhere near the road. Um, the question that was raised in the email last night was who was involved in the development? And it stated that they understood it was the same people that had the wind turbine disposal site. So I did a little bit of checking and this is not highly accurate or anything like that, but I did find that both that organization owns that property. Several other, they own several other entities and they also own the property out on this fifty-one. So there's a perhaps connection. They all are the same address in Mid-Mid-Oklahoma, which is not at all unusual for different businesses to have different legal names. But because I got this request from him, you couldn't be here, I came today in her place. So that's the reason I'm here, just wondering what's going on.
Okay, I'm not aware of any of the others or anything?
And I used county assessor's information.
Okay.
And from the addresses as well, I got that. And then I looked at Secretary of State and some other legal entities that manage corporate registrations. And in Oklahoma, you don't necessarily have to register corporate entity. Many of them are registered with the Secretary of State. Many of them are registered with other organizations of the federal or not within one, but the national level trade type organization. And this particular address is registered several entities and not registered rather considering the real estate development that this is in my view. So that's what I know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous items from the audience? Hearing them, we'll move on to item five A, discussion possible action fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, CEP report. You all had an opportunity to review this.
Yes, but maybe and this is a, what is, what is this? Just kind of explain it to me in general, this overall is for me, just my limited knowledge of this.
So any federal funds that come into the county that has to be reported?
Okay.
And so if, if the federal government issued, say, FEMA money for an emergency disaster, then the year that they issued that to come for, it's a kind of a year.
It was sent to the auditor's office just to make sure and they made a few changes or suggestions and it's corrected on the one for you all.
Okay, thank you. Going in, I believe our emergency management department gets some of these grants, so I think some of that is federal money when they're doing the, what we're in the middle of doing now, the emergency preparedness deal.
Yep, that has communication.
Yeah, has communication. So it's any, any federal money we receive.
Awesome. I couldn't tie it together, but I wanted to add, you know, saying that's.
Yeah, no bad question.
Make a motion to accept the CEP report.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to accept the schedule of expenditures of federal awards for fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item B, discussion possible action piece industrial flat. Are you here for that?
Okay.
It was tabled?
It was. This is, I believe, tabled last week because Butch had mentioned there's something about conditional. We didn't understand what conditional meant. We wanted to wait till you were back in some conversations you were having with them or with the, the ADA. So we, Rhonda and I just were like, just best wait till Zach gets back and, and ask you what conditional meant for some of the, it was the road, the width of the road or something like that. And this is because they're paving this area and we didn't want to do anything else getting your, what did conditional mean? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And when, when I had sent this to Max, asking, inquiring on how to proceed, that is, was his response, we could approve it conditionally. And that's all I'm aware of about the definition of that. They do, it was brought to my attention by Buck and the crew that is trying to get this accomplished, that the road standards for concrete is, is it exceeds the asphalt paving? And I don't know that it should necessarily. Asphalt paving and our road standards are twenty-four foot wide and paving, after concrete paving is twenty-six for some reason. And maybe it's just something I didn't catch when we was passing our road, county road standards. And so they, from my understanding, they are asking that we can narrow that back down to twenty-four feet. And a, and a question that was raised is if, if they submitted it to have gravel roads and we approved it and then later they decided to concrete it, then there's no standards because we've already approved it. So that was another question I posed to Max is how, what, what is our authority and what, what do we have to do with any of that? So anyway, I, I, I think that we would be proper in allowing a twenty-four foot paved, concrete paved road rather than twenty-six. That'll save considerable amounts of money and twenty-four feet wide is what we do up our county roads that are speeding up to forty-five. So unless there's parking on the road, which I don't, don't know what the plan is.
Gotcha. So it was just that, it was just, um, just the conditional between that and that, that's, that's my understanding of this.
Well, so part of the problem is, is they're saying they're going to build it to that standard and I believe what his conditional was, was it's approved upon the condition that they build it to the standards that we put forth. And if it is not, then I guess somehow we can revoke that approval. Is my understanding.
Gotcha. And it's concrete and not asphalt?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a difference between the, help me, between the width of a concrete and asphalt?
There's, in my opinion, there shouldn't be.
Okay.
But in our road standards, there is.
Okay.
And that's something I think we should address in the, in the future.
Future, correct.
I was checking into the deal with the wells. He said that they yielded like around ten gallons a minute. But I've checked on these. It doesn't show what any of the yields are on these reports. For all four of these wells that they drew. And two of these look like they're almost in the same hole. I'm concerned if the housing subdivision behind there with eighty-five homes on it with wells and then this industrial site that who knows how much water they're going to use. And then you've got the people that live around that that's already got their wells. And I think there's going to be a huge problem with water.
Well, I, I, I share the same concern with the water supply, but in what I found, we, we have no authority over any water situation for. And, and do you have anything you want to add to this discussion?
Not unless you need me to.
Okay. Again, I, I share the same concern with, with the water supply for those residents. And that's something that I intend to get with our legislators this coming year and try to have some kind of process that has got to be approved by the Oklahoma Water Resource Board or something where they turn in their plans to them and they, they give us the approval that there is an aquifer that is sufficient for this manasse. But currently we have no authority and nothing is to stop them from going ahead and developing it and just not having a plan. They can go ahead and do, go proceed with their plans and anything we can do that.
Well, I'm concerned that if constituents and stuff, when they do buy the property and then they're going to run out of water, then they're going to think that everybody's going to be diligent and have it.
Well, I, again, I agree with that.
Okay, so we're good? Or the conditional is just that concrete to twenty-four to twenty-six or twenty-seven? That's, that's what we were concerned last with the conditional. We just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
From my interpretation of our ADA's reply was it's, it would prove it conditionally, it is on the condition that they meet the road requirements as we said.
Gotcha.
And if there is going to be a motion, many and I would like for it to be included, that we would allow a twenty-four foot concrete roads.
Gotcha. I'll make a motion to approve, um, piece industrial flat with the condition to, uh, for twenty-four feet, uh, concrete roads inside this area.
I will second the motion. Any other discussion? Do you want to note that I, I agree that I, I have concerns for the water, but I believe that goes beyond our skill, but we are allowed to give an authority to look at. All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item C, discussion possible action indig- cremation request.
This was tabled last week as well, um, because I have the email now from Max Myers that, um, there were some emails back and forth about whether or not this person, this individual met the county requirements for our indigent cremation. And he emailed back and forth that there's several emails that he's not sure that this meets required criteria. I have the email over here, just one I could not provide last week with Rhonda, and so I wanted to retable this so I could show her and you as well for this, uh, uh, request for indigent cremation.
What was that one?
Uh, their request for the indigent cremation. So this is all the emails from.
And, uh, so I would say at this time we could probably move to disapprove this application to deny it. Uh, and we'll go from there.
Is that a motion?
I'll watch, yeah, make a motion.
I'll, I will make a motion to disapprove of the indigent cremation request for C. Justin due to information from our, uh, uh, district attorney, assistant district attorney.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to disallow the application as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item D, we have a road name request. This has been presented by the assessor and recommended for approval for, uh, Larita's Lane. This is in that.
I think it's kind of like the driveway.
Yeah, off of Fresh Creek, north of Lakeview going west.
I make a motion to approve the road name for Larita's Lane with no road maintenance by the county?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the road name request as recommended by the assessor for Larita's Lane with no county maintenance. All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item E, discussion possible action lease agreement renewal, twenty twenty-three Caterpillar. Looks like, uh, item E, F, G, and H are all lease renewals for twenty, twenty-three Caterlivers.
Yes. E, F, and G are with a strong name and, and H is with.
Heritage.
Heritage, American heritage. These are for my pipe readers that I provide ends. I make a motion to accept the lease agreements.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the lease renewal. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes.
Those for which ones do you have, Chief?
An H.
An H, okay.
All right.
This is a, they did on that.
Oh.
Yes.
Uh, item I, discussion possible action utility crossing agreement for existing lines between KMO Electric Corporate Bank and the Board of County Commissioners. KMO and Board of County Commissioners acknowledge that KMO owns OpEx approximately one hundred and seven miles of existing electric transmission lines in Payne County that deliver electricity to KMO members, owner cooperatives, including Central Royal Electric Cooperative for distribution to members and consumers. KMO Electric Transmission Lines Systems in Payne County has numerous existing road crossings in Payne County and have been used for decades for ingress and egress purposes for ongoing maintenance and construction activities. In acknowledgement of these existing circumstances, this agreement is entered into this day of July twenty twenty-five between KMO and Payne County Board of Commissioners. Under the terms and conditions of this agreement, KMO and Board agreed to the following existing lines. KMO shall not be required to purchase temporary or permanent utility crossing permits for road crossings or industrial access permits from the Board for its existing transmission lines in Payne County. Responsibility for damages, KMO shall be responsible for any and all damages caused to road stitches, culverts, gates, improvements or adjacent infrastructure resulting from its construction and maintenance activities on existing lines in County. Prior to commencing work, this inspection notification, KMO and its contractors shall inspect the condition of existing road stitches, culverts, gates, infrastructure, and improvements within the project area and document existing conditions with photographs or written notes should questions arise about road conditions at a later date. Restoration obligation. Upon completion of work, KMO and its contractors shall restore any damaged road stitches, culverts, gates, improvements or addition of infrastructure to the original or better condition. All restoration activities by KMO and its contractors shall be completed in a timely manner. And indemnification, KMO agrees to indemnify the vendor whole harmless, the Payne County Board of Commissioners from any, uh, against any claims caused or liabilities arising from damage to public or private road stitches, culverts, gates, improvements or infrastructure due to KMO's construction and maintenance activities in Payne County.
Yes, I had quite a conversation between them and their contractor and I just feel like this is the right thing to do. They're, with right here, they're not going outside the county. This isn't anything to do with transmission lines. So they want to have a good working relationship with the best of them. So whatever we charge is charged onto the consumer. Because you know, when they do that, they cut us off.
So this, this, these access points are all for infrastructure that's supplying C or AC wholly?
That's all they work with is to prove C or AC.
How many counties does C or AC cover?
I know they cover Oklahoma, Logan, and us. They probably go up into Oboe. I mean, I don't know how many. Down in the weekend.
Uh, is this, I, I think it's still important that they fill out a, a crossing or industrial access permit. We can just waive the fee potentially.
We can do that. The league might know that. It's just, it's the fees that they're concerned about.
What about bonding for those?
I don't know. I mean, I talked to them about it.
Okay. I mean, as long as they're still going to complete a road crossing permit, so we have an idea of where they're working. Because I'm not going to rely on them to check the roads. I'm going to go do it before they start work.
Right.
And if I know the locations, then I can do that.
Right. Because I did tell them I needed to know where those areas are. So if I have to do the permits, then they'll waste it on top.
And then a bond is just going to be protection?
Right.
Should they fail to restore the roads to the original condition?
Well, I can get back with them and we can table this till the next meeting. That'll be fine.
Okay.
I'm sure they probably won't have any problem with that.
Yeah, as long as we can have it spelled out, they should still be responsible for completing a, a permits.
Right.
Uh, and for bonding. Then I don't necessarily have a problem with it.
Yeah.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to table till the next table of that, so I get one for this.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to table utility crossing agreement for existing lines of KMO and Board of County Commissioners. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Uh, item J, discussion possible action contract for plumbing services and supplies as needed between the Vantage Plumbing, Heating and Cooling and Board of County Commissioners of Payne County.
This should be the, our agreement, has an advantage to continue working with each other.
For plumbing services?
Plumbing, yes.
Yep.
Sorry.
And it spells out the per hour rate for regular business hours and after hours and things such as that. Believe we've been with advantage for quite some time.
Correct.
About the entertaining a motion?
Make a motion to approve contract between Payne County Board of Commissioners and the Vantage Plumbing and Heating and Cooling.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item K, discussion possible action contract to monitor and inspect equipment at the Payne County Administration Building before the Falcon alarm company of St. Water and Board of County Commissioners.
This is the one we've been working on, trying to get ahold of them and finally got it taken care of for, just a continuation. We've had, they've been, uh, in contract with the county for several years, from my understanding, before I got here.
And they, they monitored the alarm systems?
Mm-hmm.
Fire alarm, hurricane alarms, all that?
Yes.
And this is a thirty dollar a month for twelve months for three hundred and sixty dollars a year. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, agreement with Falcon Alarm Company and Payne County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve contract as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item L, any ingress egress agreements?
I have two. Uh, one is between Ralph and Jamie Rice that's on Sanger. And then Heidi Shreve, every vocal tres song. It's also on Sanger for the work that you're doing there. I think I'm going to approve these two ingress egress agreements.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the two ingress egress agreements for purposes of fixing the road. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item N, removal of equipment items from inventory. I have one declaration of surplus to A, one and two, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty dash D one. So I have two twenty twenty-three Western Star tractor trucks that we are declaring surplus. So I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty dash one.
So move.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty dash D one. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item two, resolution for disposal of equipment. This is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty-one. Uh, two twenty twenty-three Western Star tractor trucks and they're being sold to Lincoln County as they had a need and they offered fifteen thousand dollars more than Premier Truck did.
So this for fifty-one, fifty-two, there's two resolutions there, one for each truck?
Yeah, both, both these resolutions, uh, when you're disposing of it, you have to have a resolution per piece of equipment.
I'll make a motion for, uh, resolutions twenty twenty-five, one fifty-one, and one fifty-two.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolutions twenty twenty-five dash one fifty-one and one fifty-two to dispose of the equipment by selling to Lincoln County for a hundred and ten thousand dollars apiece. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item N, discussion for Payne County radio system.
Uh, things are moving along. I think the two big things is Cushing Tower Mediation has started and, um, they're starting the dispatch site visits and just getting an idea of how they're going to go about it.
Ever gets a generator fixed, that's a.
Um, they're waiting on a piece that they haven't been able to get yet, so they're. So they're, the contract company with Motorola for that is reaching out to other companies to see if they can get someone else.
All right. Thank you. Item O, any cash appropriations?
I have none.
Item P, discussion on possible action, fire department pre-requests positions. I have not seen one.
I have none.
All right. Item Q, purchase orders.
Purchase orders to dictate today for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five are two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and nine cents. And for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Make a motion with full signature.
Second. Motion has been made to approve purchase orders upon signature and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley? Yes. Commissioner Cabot votes yes. Item R, any monthly reports of officers?
I have none.
Any public announcements from the board? Very none. Item seven, any road crossing or utility permits?
None.
Any new business? Very none. I would entertain a motion to recess from our commission meeting to go into Paint County Economic Development Authority.
So will.
Second. Has been made and seconded to recess the Paint County Board of County Commissioners meeting and seconded. All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley? Yes. I will open or call the meeting to order for the special meeting of the Paint County Economic Development Authority. And we have minutes. Has everybody seen that?
I'll make a motion for the minutes as red.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the June twenty-seventh Economic Development Authority meeting minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, Trustee Markham?
Yes.
Trustee Conley? Yes. And Trustee Cabot votes yes. Item three, discussion possible action, Economic Development Authority house update. They have finally completed all the punch list items on the Economic Development House in Cushing, so we will be proceeding to secure a real estate professional to list it or get it on market in one way or the other. Hopefully, we will be getting that sold within the next ninety days. I just kind of wanted to put that on air to give a little update and see if there's any questions about it. Hopefully, we'll get the bill from Central Tech shortly as well, since we'll have to pay that. And I believe we authorized them up to a hundred and twenty thousand in our agreement, just if my memory serves me correctly.
So they had elected to bring some forward for selling?
We did have appraisal done on it, and it, I really can't remember it. I think it's a hundred and fifty, somewhere around. I can't really remember. And it wasn't quite what I was expecting, I was thinking it'd be more. Anyway, all right, so there's no action on item three. Item four, discussion possible action, donations to the Economic Development Authority for Board of County Commissioners property known as the White Land Project. I was asked by Mr. Anderson to have this placed on the agenda for this meeting. And this is, I'll let you explain it. Or I can.
Well, I don't know if I did it's explainable. We were fortunate enough to receive a small grant, and this is land that was given to the county for use of extension for public good. So if we run it through OSU and the Extension Office, OSU, anything over five hundred dollars, they keep twenty percent for administrative reasons. And rather than that, it's not really a convenient way to do things, and we put it through the Board of County Commissioners and have to go through purchase orders and things, and that was recommended by taking it through the Economic Development Authority on receiving a gift, just like we received the U T V from T and K not too long ago. And there is an account through the Treasurer's Office for the Economic Development Authority. And to be more convenient and less bothersome in spending any money, I can go make purchases, bring her receipts, they write me a check to reimburse me on this small grant. It's a three thousand dollar grant from Oklahoma Rural Rehabilitation Corporation for projects like we're doing. So, and visiting with Zach about this issue, not only to accept this grant, this donation grant, but also the allowance of me to buy and purchase, I need fuel incidentals, different, whatever comes up type of things, the authority to make those purchases and to be reimbursed by the Treasurer's Office to the Economic Development Authority from this three thousand dollar grant.
Does that clear his mind?
Pretty close.
Okay. So this, it would be, I'm visiting with Glenn on this as well, and for us to put it in county money to go to things that are not county purposes, it would, you know, then we'll be audited on it and have to go through that much more auditing. The Economic Development Authority is still audited by C P E W. So in, in order to save money that's donated, make more go towards the projects they're working on, if we can run it through the Economic Development Authority, which is my understanding that, that is an avenue that the state auditor has said it could be used for that. From my knowledge of the Economic Development Authority, it's pretty broad in what we can use it for, and I believe this would help the economy around the town if we continued to improve this facility. So it was mentioned that any, any funds that he would deposit, there would be a record specifically kept for them. And then upon the authority of this board given to the chairman of, whoever the chairman will be or is, of this authority to sign off on any expenditures. So if he goes and buys something with his own card for this, I think we'd do some kind of receiving report where, you know, somebody who says, yes, we did receive that, so there's no potential fraud. And then that would give him the authority to make a purchase without us having to meet every time he needs to buy something. So this three thousand dollar probably ain't going to be all spent in one spot. Or even potential future grants. We don't want, I don't believe that we would want to have to meet every time he needs to.
This just makes it more convenient.
Which government has never been real convenient.
Well, this is makes it the most convenient way we know it.
And we still, none of us want fraud either, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think, you know, as long as there's.
We want to be as transparent as possible.
As long as maybe the director of extension says, yes, we received these items. Kind of do the same receiving report, and then in this meeting week is, I don't know how, the best way to do it would be, but say that in any funds that are deposited, there would be a special record kept for them. And then we would give him authority to expend only the amount of funds that has been deposited for the purpose of the White Land Project. And that, well, it still requires two signatures now to sign any of those checks. So it would still have to be the majority, you know, the treasurer would have to see the receiving report and the signer, and the signer could be any one of us, I think, that we agreed to last, that any, any authority member could sign, so. Anyway, that's what's being asked.
I apologize for this being such a headache, this is jumping through hoops that you didn't know those hoops were there, but this just seems like the most convenient way.
We're just going to charge the thirty percent for administration.
And, you know, I do want to extend my gratitude to the county for their support of the land and, and some things that have been done out there. So I really appreciate y'all's support and making progress on this project.
And I would say, we, we need to get some guidelines kind of presented, because I don't really, and that's the treasurer, she's willing to keep track of that, so if we can.
I'll talk to her.
Oh, you have, okay. So just like the depositing process, if, if you've already arranged that with the treasurer, she's fine, but keeping a special record of the money that you've deposited.
I think she owes me, so it's definitely. Now, and, and for, for y'all's knowledge, we have an advisory board that oversees this. Rhonda's on one of them, she's the commissioner of where the land is at. And other visits on this forward, so it's not just me dreaming up stuff, spend money, it's, it runs through a process, so there is an advisory board that oversees that.
So I believe the motion that would need to be made is allow deposits of donated funds, or any funds, I guess, for the White Land Project to be deposited and have a special record kept by the Secretary of this Authority, which is the Paint County Treasurer currently. And that the designated person, whoever that may be, at this time, I believe it would be you, Nathan?
Yes.
Would be given the authority to spend only the amount of funds that they have deposited into the account, and present that with a receiving report signed by the Extension Agent Director.
So will.
A second.
Yes.
You don't want to repeat that wrong? Any other discussion? All right. I would, all for both then, all in favor, Commissioner Markham? Or Trustee Markham? Trustee Conley? Yes. And Trustee Cabot votes yes.
I'll make a motion for the signature.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, Trustee Markham?
Yes.
Trustee Conley? Yes. Second. Motion has been made and seconded to reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting at nine forty-two. All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley? Yes. And Commissioner Cabot votes yes. And we will be signing documents. I think we need to go back to. Item M two, A and B, resolution twenty twenty-five, one fifty-one, one fifty-two. And on the road, the chairman to sign the titles on the.
Make a motion for the chairman to find the title of the having board.
Second. Has been made and seconded to allow the chairman to sign the titles of those two items on the desk, all in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley? Yes. And Commissioner Cabot votes yes.
I'm going to put them this way.
This is all made. Not making too certain. This is coming back. Or. We. 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 A lot of the. We. 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 Just. We. 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 I just might try to sort of. Okay. 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 Yeah, yeah.
So, that's our intention, anything.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Very cool. Well, so you guys have some demonstrations or something out there, you have, text, phone, email with us?
Yes, yeah, I started, uh, in, uh, January officially, but I focus on, uh, my, my. This is the last, uh, but, uh, but yeah, I do it on the market, uh, it's, it's this report, you can email it on there.
If you search still weekend, uh, and where it's. Oh, projections?
Yeah.
I listen to the different. How do you guys utilize great information? Very cool, all right, that's, you may ask all I got? Uh, please don't give me things like that, good for you, all right? All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank y'all, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I came to help you with that one if you need it. Is it the Timberlake Reserve?
Timberlake Reserve, Timberline.
Yeah. One of these ones on there.
Do you mind?
Yeah, this was one of them. They called me, and I didn't, it was after, they called me like, third afternoon or Friday, and I was like, I hope they're on there, it wasn't me. So this one, I'll see you again there.
I need to come back, that's no worries.
Yeah, uh, did you email this to D one secretary?
It's been around this office, I don't know how many times, I don't know who all it's been to. When I brought it up here, I handed it to, uh.
Now?
Yes, yeah.
You have a digital copy?
I can get you one.
Okay, I think, uh, was this week before last you brought this in?
I brought that thing in a couple months ago.
Okay. If you have a digital copy, you'll email it to your name on secretary, maybe I have, I have, and ask for the request in general.
Okay.
Because we'll need a digital copy to send it out.
Okay. Do you want me to take that other one to the personal assessor?
Uh, you don't get taken there, but if you want it up after, you can take it in there.
I mean, I'm going home, so. I said I don't take it with me, so it doesn't make a difference, but, I appreciate you guys, I'll get that sent over.
Okay. The same here, it was in Mexico.
There's no worries.
Yeah.
I think he's here now.
Yeah, I took a bunch of pictures of it, and down in that hole, he's on it, so. And then so with it, it's, it's real funky, man, great. Stick a fan right in front of the door. Don't have no fans?
They're all used.
They're all been used.
Had a commissioner doing this a hundred years ago, crazy.
I'm saying, well, probably did outside.
Well, they had windows up, it opened and closed, one thing.
And they did it in an open, 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 great barn.
Barn, I like it. And we used, you know what, everything goes in circles?
About to come back.
I was talking to my wife the other day about flip phones, I remember flip phone, and I, and now they're coming back, like, it's been thirty years or whatever. Whenever they get, like, went out of style, I'm like, oh, it breaks too much, and now they're back in style.
There's a lot of people that flip phone.
Maybe one hundred of them.
Yeah, it's all, all these, well.
It's all mine, so.
Yeah, the sea, the sea water's going through there, it's passing it down. Oh, yeah, I think through there one week, this guy stopped, they had a kayak, and they were trying to put it in there.
True.
Uh, I didn't.
They were on downhill side, but those two.
Yeah, I got.
Or there are kids, they're very small.
No.
I don't even know how to take that in.
Cause I'm, I'm.
Mister Zuck, I think you got some good news.
Oh, yeah. It's a boy.
You don't read my texts, do you?
I was gone all last week. Yeah, but I got the text.
You got a five eight number?
We want him to cruise.
How was it, did you stay in the center of the boat or did you get like six?
I got C six.
Why, you didn't like the boat? Not agree with you.
I just said that. Not my thing.
It's not my thing. But it didn't work for you though, was it good?
Huh?
You hang out on the boat.
Now, we just did a, a little bit.
Where's the order on it?
Far away here.
Uh, you should be now, so. Person that has another top side.
So it's the whole thing is down.
It's open, I guess. Is there?
Well, I wasn't saying that, please keep us posted, if they get cases today, we're gonna have a lot of them.
Yes, um, he's in.
Yesterday, I got that one wrong.
That's a lot.
Yes.
How long you got?
This, this reminds me of something. So what do you think of that J V number?
Beautiful, beautiful number.
What, what, what do we do then?
Uh, we get a contact, I suppose.
So I, I, I'm all in, I'm ready to keep going.
Did, uh, lost that time, or where we were, that place, did we run that through and get it placed on Friday?
Sure, it's, if it's a J, uh, since, since O dot assigned a J V number, it should be on, whether it's in the, you know, not, it should be on.
Yeah.
But it, O dot assigned a J V number, so it's in the.
It's in the queue.
It's in the queue.
All right.
So you got that tape from O dot.
Yeah.
So we're good to go.
How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good. I was out last week, so.
You were out last week?
Yeah.
Oh, that's why you went out for ten minutes.
Say what?
That's why you went out for ten minutes.
Yeah, I, I like, like out of the country, so I didn't have, so, Mexico, Honduras, one more cruise. Ha, the last week? I have?
Yes. Well, I haven't seen my body review.
Yeah.
But it looks like it.
I was waiting it out.
I think we all was waiting it out today.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have a meeting next Monday.
Yeah, our next meeting will be, uh, the twenty-nine, or the thirtieth?
Could be a little.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, yeah. Uh, would you like, would you like to come out to our, uh, awards on?
Uh, I can do this, I can make it some other time, I've got, I can call you at this, I've got a meeting with the state auditor in ten minutes, I'd like to finish this. I'll call you soon, I'll call you today, awesome, okay, thank you, good to see you.
Your, your next meeting is the thirtieth?
Cause we have to do it on the Monday.
At that go.
We have to that go.
How, how does that work?
This is my primary calendar.
Right, right, I, so you'll have, you'll have the county commissioner meeting here on the thirty. Do you happen to know if they're having a C E five meeting the day before that?
Then it shows that we are. Yeah, change this.
Usually they, those end of the echo meeting.
There's still kind of a, just a, sometimes they, they call meeting to, but I don't know that they have, we take care of all of our business that are regularly scheduled.
Are you all gonna be in the echo meeting?
I know.
I will.
I think so.
The thirtieth?
The thirtieth, the thirty-first, the thirtieth.
We said had somebody up there with one of them big, feels like they did back in the Egyptian days, up here a fan in them, yes. I usually have your three meter down.
I'm just reminded of all of our work, we have that work in the heat like this.
When I jump here, I could work outside. There's some truth to it, I thought maybe too.
Especially with the humidity in September. So I can't burn like I used to.
Are you good, so you're good, the wind's moving.
It's moving hard, we'll see tomorrow.
You would ever comes up with?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be.
You guys would know what FEMA, FEMA funding is, you get FEMA funds, you can, or nothing.
For what kind of?
Well, if, if you had, if you had a bunch of bridges that were damaged in the range we had, if you qualify for FEMA funding.
I think, I think, uh, some kind of threshold is several.
Really? I want, uh, Amber Amber Mitchell to be the one.
Yeah.
So we're good here to keep, right? We got us a J V number, we need to keep going. You know, I want the guys to know that that's kind of our way.
Should be there soon.
With that, with that keep going, I think I'm gonna go get my truck, some American truck. It's, uh.
Hopefully not flat truck here. Oh, boy.
Real slight, I like this, that one's today.
Saying I'm hot, I don't want to.
And it breaks.
And you lock the brake.
If you push on brake pedal, I'm gonna, ooh.
Not as when you're gas, when you're taking off, you just feel it.
I don't like your, probably your fan. Close right after you go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Call me something.
Will do.
And I'm having a meeting next Monday, but I guess I'll be at that meeting.
Yep.
We'll do after that. And I'll let the guys know, we're good on that deal, and I guess if, if, Rob, if you hear anything, good news from us, let us know. Perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Get the, get that, get the air conditioner fixed.
They're, they're, they're here working on it, I do know that.
Save the money on that five dollar electric bill.
You are saving money. See y'all.
See ya.
Crazy thing, you'll never see it, for our electric company, a week, a time with the, you know, power spinout, you never stayed on the electric. This is amazing for me.
Guess they got some of this up here, but, um, yeah, we still have one leak though. It's not from the roof, I think it's from somewhere else, so we're gonna do, this week we're doing water testing. We brought up into red things last week, so we couldn't figure it out. And we're gonna do a water test. If that doesn't help us out, then. Next very first again. Not over sure. If we got it fixed, most every leak one way, after the big family that went two weeks ago.
So the eight, it's not raining now.
I don't know. Water terrain, so we see if we've.
So it's fixed or not?
It's fixed or not, well, the one's not, the northwest corner's not, both not, so we're trying, that's where we're gonna do a water test to figure out where it's, where it's at, so. All the other ones. I don't know what part of it, is it jinxing it now?
Second. Been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, Martin?
Yes.
With the conflict, yes, make you have a boot case. Commissioner Conley, yes, make the ban a bootcase. And have that hot coffee.